Welcome, everyone. I call the May 16th City Council Meeting to order. Mayor Polly has an excused absence this evening, so I, Council President Walsh, will be serving as Mayor Pro Tem. Councilmember Martz also has an excused absence this evening. As a reminder, we continue to have a remote aspect to our meetings. Both staff and members of the public may be participating in tonight's meeting remotely via WebEx. Councilmember Joe is also attending tonight's meeting remotely. The first item on the agenda is Pledge of Allegiance. I welcome you to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Those online can remain muted. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
The next item of business is special business. So tonight, we have four proclamations for the city, and for each, they will be accepted by someone virtually. So our first is ID 1067, International Human Resources Day proclamation. It's going to be accepted by Stephanie Johnson, our HR Director, Lauren Knox, our Senior HR Analyst, Candy Lorenzo, our HR Analyst, and Ruziel Genules, our HR Coordinator. Okay, so I'm going to take a moment to read. I hope you guys get a chance to listen. So whereas, International Human Resources Day is celebrated around the world to recognize the important contributions of human resources professionals, and whereas, human resources professionals are vital to the function, efficiency, and harmony of a modern workforce; and whereas, human resources professionals develop policies and procedures to keep the workforce safe, increase connection, resolve conflict; and whereas, human resources professionals lead the workforce in establishing a safe, welcoming, and positive workplace by implementing trainings that advance equity, ensure compliance with local and federal laws, and advance personal growth and career development; and whereas, the coronavirus pandemic has changed the workplace at the city of Issaquah and around the world, and impacted staffing, safety, health, and regular operations; and whereas, Issaquah's HR team has adapted swiftly and consistently in response to ever-changing pandemic conditions; and whereas, our human resources professionals serve the public by recruiting, retaining, and training the best talent to the city of Issaquah. Now, therefore, I, Lindsey Walsh, Mayor Pro Tem of the city of Issaquah, do recognize May 20th, 2022, Human Resources Day. Okay.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that so greatly. I'm so excited to have the entire HR team here tonight. It's not often that we get the whole team here at council, so I just want to give a special shout out to the team. Lauren, our birthday girl of the night, she has been on parental leave for the last months, and so we're really excited that she was able to join us, and she's accumulating back to our team after some well-deserved baby time off, June 1. Candy is new to our department as of February 1, and came from Reno, Nevada, so we're so excited for her to join our team here in Issaquah in the Northwest. And then Rogel has been with the city for about three years, but came over from the Parks and Community Services Team. And I'm just really excited to have, you know, this team. They are absolutely fabulous, and it has been a really crazy last couple of years for so many of the reasons that you read in that proclamation, and this team has just been really resilient to all of that, and really, you know, serving our employees and trying to make, you know, Issaquah that workplace destination that we achieve or strive to be. So I just want to say thank you. Thank you to the council. Thank you to the team, and really looking forward to the next things that we can do to support our workforce and what's next.
Fantastic. Well, we are glad to have you guys here, just soaking up our appreciation on all of that. Thank you. Our next proclamation is ID 1159, Emergency Medical Services Week proclamation, and we will be joined online by Ben Lane, the Assistant Fire Chief for Eastside Fire and Rescue. I'll give you a moment to gather up the peoples. Do we have Ben?
I'm here.
There we go. Fantastic. Okay. Whereas, in 1974, President Gerald Ford announced and authorized the first National Emergency Medical Services Week; and whereas, medical services are a vital public service; and whereas, the members of Eastside Fire and Rescue stand ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week; and whereas, access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illnesses or injury; and whereas, medical emergency services has grown to fill a gap by providing important out-of-hospital care, including preventative medicine, follow-up care, and access to telemedicine; and whereas, the members of the Eastside Fire and Rescue, whether career or reserves, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills; and whereas, it is appropriate to recognize the value and the accomplishments of emergency medical service providers by designating Emergency Medical Services Week. Now, therefore, I, Lindsey Walsh, Mayor Pro Tem of the city of Issaquah, do hereby proclaim the week of May 15th to 21st, 2022, to be Emergency Medical Services Week in the city of Issaquah, and I invite the community to join me in thanking the Eastside Fire and Rescue for their service and outstanding contributions. Ben?
Thank you. It's an honor and privilege to be with you virtually tonight. I wish I was there in person. However, we've all become accustomed to certainly being flexible during these challenging times. I wanted to share a little bit about the men and women of Eastside Fire and Rescue who continue to stand ready to respond during these ever-changing times. Year-to-date, within the city of Issaquah, your firefighters have responded to 1,279 emergency medical calls. Those responses account for 73% of Eastside Fire and Rescue's total calls for service within the city, and that's a 4% increase over last year. Undoubtedly, your firefighters are some of the best-trained in the country, but what I believe makes them special is their ability to deliver exceptional service. I've personally been witness to crews arriving on scene, quickly engaging the patient, assessing their symptoms, and beginning treatment while simultaneously calming them, reassuring them, and gaining their trust. Their compassion and empathy amid what at times can be extremely chaotic is what I believe sets them apart. So again, thank you for the recognition this evening, and please know the men and women of Eastside Fire and Rescue are ready to respond and carry out our mission of excellence in service and dedication to community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben, and we are very much appreciative of that service and the service to the city and our residents. Our next proclamation is ID 1160, Public Works Week proclamation, and we will be joined virtually by Bennett Ashbaugh, our Public Works Manager for Streets. There we go. Okay. So whereas, this year marks the 62nd Annual National Public Works Week; and whereas, the 2022 national theme, Ready and Resilient, honors the public works professionals who are ready to serve their communities and resilient as ever when encountering challenges; and whereas, our public work professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of the city of Issaquah; and whereas, these infrastructure, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government and in the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our community; and whereas, we pay tribute to the substantial contributions these individuals make to protecting our health, safety, and quality of life. Now, therefore, I, Lindsey Walsh, Mayor Pro Tem of the city of Issaquah, do hereby proclaim May 15th to 21st, 2022, to be Public Works Week in the city of Issaquah, and I invite the community to join me in thanking the Public Works Department for their service and outstanding contributions.
Hello. Thank you, councilmembers, for this moment of recognition for the Public Works team. This year's theme of the National Public Works Awareness Week is Ready and Resilient, and it applies to our current public workforce in many true and defining ways. This group shows ownership, true ownership, of our city and the high quality of work, long hours, and an amazing ability to be proactive and reactive at a moment's notice. The wide variety of tasks include, but are not limited to, transportation, water, wastewater, stormwater, and surface water, solid waste, telecom, environmental compliance, floodplain management, fleet, emergency management support, and first response, along with all sorts of other aspects of right-of-way management. Our group is strong. However, we are only as strong because of the support of our fellow departments, elected officials, and strong leadership and administration. This team is resilient and always ready for the next task or project to make our city what it is today and what we strive for in the future. Really appreciate the time and the proclamation and all the staff, and thank you for your service and efforts.
Thank you, Bennett. As I said, when I visited the Public Works Department, often, your work is very invisible, but it is supremely necessary for all of the residents and the services that we provide in the city of Issaquah. And I know you, as one person, represent many dozens within the Public Works Department that we really want to thank. So, thank you.
Absolutely.
So our next proclamation is ID 1161, Safe Boating and Paddling Week proclamation, and we will be joined by the United States Coast Guard Auxiliary District 13 Flotilla 2-2 representatives, Dave Savage, Savage? I'm not sure, and Ben Shawn Bethune. Thank you for joining us. The proclamation. Whereas, the National Safe Boating Week is coordinated each year by the National Safe Boating Council and its boating safety partners across the United States and Canada; and whereas, for nearly 100 million Americans, boating continues to be a popular recreational activity, and from coast to coast and everywhere in between, people are taking to the water and enjoying time together boating, sailing, paddling, and fishing; and whereas, on average, 650 people die each year in boating-related accidents in the United States, with the vast majority of those accidents caused by human error and poor judgment; and whereas, this campaign serves to remind us to keep safety front and center all season long; and whereas, a significant number of boaters who lose their lives by drowning each year would be alive today had they worn their life jackets; and whereas, the city of Issaquah is adjacent to Lake Siamish and encompasses numerous other waterways. Now, therefore, I, Lindsey Walsh, Mayor Pro Tem of the city of Issaquah, do hereby proclaim the week of May 21st to 27th, 2022, to be Safe Boating and Paddling Week in the city of Issaquah, and I encourage all community members to make responsible decisions when taking to the water for boating, sailing, paddling, and fishing activities, and to wear a life jacket.
Mayor Pro Tem and councilmembers. My name is Dave Savage, and I'm here with Shawn Bethune. We're both staff officers in the Coast Guard Auxiliary. And we're looking to build more collaborative relationships with the cities around to promote Safe Boating Week, and I really appreciate your proclamation. We look forward to working with you, and we would like to have a summer this year without any single tragedies on our local waterways. Unfortunately, it did tick up somewhat in the recent years, partly because of the pandemic and less awareness out there. So this proclamation, I think, will really go a long ways to promoting public safety, and if you can promote life jacket wearing and, you know, eliminating boating under the influence and preparing and educating boaters, it would really be excellent. So please feel free to reach out to us. There's lots of boating education classes available out there, and we look forward to working with you. Thank you very much for your proclamation.
And thank you, and we will join you in recommending that there is life jacket wearing and safe boating on our waterways. Thank you.
It's Wear Your Life Jacket to Work Day on May 20th. I don't know if you'd like to do that, but...
I'll have to think about it, but thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And that concludes our proclamations. Our next item of business is audience comments. So members of the public may address council at this time either in person or virtually. Those who signed up in advance to make comments will be called on first. If you're joining us virtually and would like to make comments, please raise your virtual hand. If you're on the phone, you can press star 3. If you have joined by computer or smartphone, you can look for the hand icon. It varies where it is by device. One option may be to go to the participant panel and then choose the raise hand icon in the lower right-hand corner. If you're in the room and did not sign up, I will ask for other speakers before closing this portion of the meeting. So clerk, has anyone signed up to speak for general audience comments?
No, no one has signed up in advance to make comments. I'm monitoring the sign-up list here and our attendee in the room to see if anyone wishes to make comments. So please raise your virtual hand or in-person hand. It doesn't look like anyone wishes to make comments tonight.
Okay. Thank you, city clerk. As a reminder, written comments can be submitted at any time to citycouncil@issaquahwa.gov. And so at this point, Deputy Council President Hall, do we have any email comments to be summarized?
Thank you. Yes, we do. We had one individual email in about items appearing on this evening's agenda. With regards to ID 1097, an informational update on electric vehicle infrastructure and fleet transition, this resident thinks EV charging technology needs more improvement and innovation before the city invests additional public funds. With regards to ID 1098, which was an informational update on the ICAP implementation, our Issaquah Climate Action Plan, this resident provided some feedback on the Clean Building Initiative and also better aligning Title 18 with the ICAP. And finally, with regard to AB 8388, which is the parcel de-purchase-and-sale agreement, this resident asked for additional details on the number of affordable housing units by AMI, and that we stop subsidizing units at 80% AMI and above. And with that, those are all the comments that we received with regard to items on our agenda in advance.
Thank you. And the next item of business is our committee and regional report. So I'm going to call each councilmember by name, starting with Councilmember Joe, virtually.
Thank you. Good evening. May 10th, we had our first Mobility Infrastructure Committee meeting, and there were two items on the agenda. First was the Solid Waste Contract. The second item was the Six-Year TIP. Both items will be coming back to council for further deliberation on June 6th, and you can look forward to a great discussion on the Solid Waste Contract, as it is a 10-year agreement potentially with the hauler. May 20th, the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee will be meeting. We are starting to review applications for the lodging tax funds, and we are also, as a side note, putting together rules of procedure for the committee, and I'm reviewing those with staff right now to try to formalize the way that the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee conducts business. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. And Councilmember De Michelle.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. On May 5th, I attended the Healthier Here Governing Board. Healthier Here received notice that its 501(c)(3) status has been approved, and this raised questions about how city, regional, and state governments will interact with a private nonprofit organization which will continue to receive federal funding. So it reminded me of the process that EFNR has been going through as well. We also received an interesting report from the Seattle-King County Public Health outlining the challenges that they are now facing with dwindling revenue after two years of massive funding during a public crisis that has also left the public health workforce depleted and demoralized. They are especially grappling with how to preserve lessons learned for future generations, as well as how to handle a built-out infrastructure that can't continue to be supported by the present revenues. So they have some very big issues on their plate. On May 12th, I attended the Eastside Human Services Forum Business Meeting. On May 13, I attended Eastside Transportation Partnership, where there was another discussion of Metro's plans to increase safety on buses. And Wednesday, there will be a Regional Transit Committee meeting in the afternoon. So that ends my report.
Thank you. And Councilmember Hunt?
Thank you. I have two reports and one upcoming meeting announcement. On Tuesday, May 3rd, we had the first meeting of the Planning, Development, and Environment Subcommittee of the council. That is Councilmember Ray, Council President Walsh, and myself. And this is the first report out of this committee, including on our work on Title 18, so I have a fair amount of detail on our conversation. We didn't make a recommendation, because this is ongoing work, but I did want to say to my fellow councilmembers, if this is a good amount of information, or if you would like more or less information in these report-outs, please do let me know, because there will be a fair number of these Title 18 report-outs as we go through this work. The first item on our agenda at this subcommittee was ID 1043, Title 18 Landscape and Open Space Review, and the committee developed a list of recommended considerations for staff, things we wanted more information on, and things we felt that they should be revisited by PPC, the Planning Policy Commission. The summary of our conversation will also go back to Planning Policy Commission, and a summary of changes and of information that we requested will also come back to our committee in a subsequent meeting. The conversation covered multiple topics, including community spaces, trees, and landscaping. On community spaces, we had several things that we wanted to be considered further. Those included citywide standardization of the code, signage to indicate where there are community spaces, and also where the green necklace would be so that people would know about these concepts and would feel welcome. And then there were also wanting to look at what other communities did as far as naming conventions in the code and standards in neighboring communities, and then making sure that our naming conventions and our terms that we use in the code are commonly understood. On trees, there were questions about the approach, which involved a different canopy target per neighborhood, and there was a discussion about the need for monitoring and how to best make sure that we are monitoring to make sure that the code is leading to the changes that we intend to get with this code, which would be primarily keeping the forested hillside of the different forested character of the different neighborhoods. We had a conversation about minimizing the fee in lieu of, which would be where you pay a fee instead of retaining trees, and how we could best make sure that we are incentivizing the behavior that the community expects as far as protecting our forested character and ecological functions of forests. And the main thing that that conversation ended with was wanting to have some examples of how the code would actually be applied in different neighborhoods, and practical examples of redevelopment versus of new development, and how you would apply the tree code in those different cases. And then on landscaping, we had some questions about why there was different landscaping code for different neighborhoods, and we also had questions about the irrigation code and wanting to better understand how we can support those community members who want to use drought-tolerant vegetation and maybe could minimize the need for irrigation, and wanting to incentivize that as we are... incentivize rain gardens and gray water and things like that. So as we continue to see very hot summers and droughts and potential climate change conditions and more extreme weather events, that we are also using plants that are most suited to that. So we asked for more information on how we could best approach that in code. And that concluded our conversation on the first item. Like I said, we didn't make a formal recommendation, but that will all be wrapped up, and it will go back to PPC, and then it will also come back to our committee. And ultimately, the full code will be reviewed by the full council. On the second item that our committee discussed, that was ID 1128, Code Enforcement Changes, there is an item on our consent calendar this evening related to this, and that is AB 8365, which is a separate tract for code enforcement changes, Title 18 Code Revision. The committee discussed and then unanimously supported putting this item on our consent calendar this evening. We felt that there is a clear public benefit of being able to enforce our code, which is the main reason for these changes, and that this could be done without negatively affecting the rest of the Title 18 process and timeline. So this item is on consent, and the item on consent is simply to put this on a separate tract from the rest of Title 18. It's not a... the item is not actually on the substance of the code enforcement changes themselves. We also discussed the code enforcement changes, and we recommended for an item to be put on a subsequent agenda, which will be, I believe, will be the June 21st regular council meeting. And those... at that meeting, we would recommend the code enforcement ordinances be adopted. We did not feel that there were controversy over the... with these changes, felt that they were long overdue. The item was presented by Lori Dunning, the Code Enforcement Officer of the city, and Anne Marie Soto, the Deputy City Attorney, and they had a lot of really good information in that presentation. One thing I wanted to flag is that our committee felt that if you wanted more information, there was a lot of good information about the specifics that were presented in that meeting, so we would recommend checking out their presentation. And the main takeaway is that the current code allows for paying fines in lieu of coming into compliance, and with the code improvements that are recommended, it would give us better tools to actually achieve compliance, and the money saved from paying fees would be used by the property owners to actually come into compliance with the code, which is what we want. Then I have one other report. On Wednesday, May 4th, the Regional Water Quality Committee met. We had two briefings. One is on the proposed sewer rate and capacity charge, and one is on the Clean Water Plan and a response to a number of concerns and questions that we had on that. On the proposed sewer rate and capacity charge, the highlight there is that the King County Executive has prepared a 10-year rate plan, and it does include substantial increases for the proposed sewer rate. The first year will observe a 5.75% increase. These costs are due to capital expenditures in a number of different areas, but it is expected to be a doubling of the rate over 10 years. So this is a big cost, and it will be a big change over time in the rates that residents have for sewer. On the Clean Water Plan, we discussed a number of concerns, wanting to understand the scope and what the different cost levers could be to, especially in light of these increasing sewer rates. And so the committee will continue to work on this. This was sort of a first look at responses to some of our questions, and there will be continuing work to best understand how we can develop actions and strategies that allow us to have... to meet our goals for clean water while also hopefully minimizing some of the rate impact on the ratepayers, which are the residents. And the next meeting of this committee will be June 1st. And then last thing, I have an announcement of upcoming meeting. There will be a meeting of the Wyra 8 Salmon Recovery Council on May 19th. There are two items. One is to allocate carry-forward funding to do a study on juvenile salmon predation by invasive fish, which would be a good thing to better understand, and then also recommendations for grant programs. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Ray?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. I have no report this evening.
Okay. Deputy Council- Deputy Counsel President Hall.
Thank you. I do have one report. It is a little lengthy, so apologies in advance. The Eastside Fire and Rescue Board of Directors met last Thursday, May 12th, in person at our headquarters on Newport Way. A couple of things to report back to council. First, we were joined by a very passionate group of the public, who provided comments and asked questions about the agency's vaccine requirement. We may have more information to bring back to council on that topic at a later time. We approved spend on a new modular training tower to be located at Fire Station 31 as part of our new partnership with Woodinville Fire and Rescue, which is going to be, which is really good. It's going to help us centralize our training better in the EFOR service area. We have, also had a really interesting discussion about our new strategic plan. So, our data collection and SWAC analysis phase, and SWAC means strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and challenges. That phase is now complete, and there were some interesting highlights from that data. As expected, personnel felt training and staffing were priorities, should be priorities for the agency. But when community members were asked what mattered most, fire suppression was actually second to emergency medical services and transport. So, that was an interesting, interesting note. And at this point, a first draft of the new strategic plan is scheduled to come back to the board in July, after some of the deputy chiefs and some other people on the working group and the internal working group are working on it. So, we'll have more to say about that in the future. Next month, at our June board meeting, our PFOS consultant will be joining us to provide a detailed update on where we're at and where we're headed. So, we'll be sure to report back to you on that afterwards. And then, lastly, our fire chief, Jeff Clark, as you may already know, has officially announced that after 32 years of service, six and a half here at EFOR, he'll be retiring at the end of the year. So, all of us on the board are, of course, devastated, but very, very happy for him. The board will now launch its process for selecting a new fire chief. At last week's meeting, we formed an ad hoc committee to make a recommendation to the full board about what should come next. And really, we'll have two options. Chief Clark has made the recommendation that we promote Deputy Chief Ben Lane to the position. And then, the other option is, of course, to hire a consultant and conduct a natural, national search like we did when we found Chief Clark. So, Councilmember Ray and I will definitely keep you updated, as I'm sure you're all very interested in that process and that outcome. And if you have any questions, feel free to email. The two of us are bringing up, according to the order, tonight. I also just wanted to encourage everyone to start thinking about how we can show our gratitude and appreciation for Chief Clark in the coming months. I'm sure the administration will have some sort of proclamation honoring his service at some point this year. But perhaps, there's something more we can do from the council perspective as well to show our gratitude. And the next meeting of the EFOR board is Thursday, June 9th, at 4:00 p.m. at our headquarters on Newport Way. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. And then, I'm going to do my council report, followed by the mayor's report. So, my council report is pretty simple. Just an upcoming meeting notification about the Affordable Housing Committee. We are meeting on Wednesday at, from 12:30 to 3:00 p.m. And for that, we're going to continue our big scope of work, which is really addressing the Growth Management Planning Council's, what they call Motion 21-1, which is an accountability framework for how we address affordable housing shortages. And in particular, one of the things we're talking about is really how we're going to set jurisdictional affordable housing targets. So, you guys know we have housing targets that are set by jurisdiction, and now they're proposing or requiring affordable housing targets, and trying to understand whether those should be set. You know, there's a very big difference between what's considered affordable housing in South King County versus on the east side, understanding what the scope of that is, whether communities should be credited for their current affordable housing, or whether communities that have more resources should be required to put more into that. So, I anticipate a robust conversation, giving some feedback from the city perspective. And that concludes my council report. Let me scoot back over. The next order of business is the mayor's report. So, there will be an executive session this evening to discuss pending or potential litigation per RCW 42.30.110, Pren 1, Pren I. The items are expected to take approximately 10 minutes. An action is anticipated to follow in open session. At this point, I want to take a moment to recognize the horrible tragedy that occurred in Buffalo over the weekend. My heart goes out to the victims' families, and my prayers go out to Buffalo Mayor Byron Brown as he works to heal his city. And unfortunately, we have to extend our thoughts to the community at Geneva Presbyterian Church in Laguna Woods, California. We are brokenhearted to hear of the senseless violence and stand with the Laguna Woods community as they attempt to heal. This weekend's horrific violence was the latest in a series of mass shootings that have deliberately targeted people based on their race, sexuality, and religion. And the hate must stop. Next, the State of the City. So, Mayor Polly has recently released her 2022 State of the City Address, and has asked me to share an introductory clip with you. The State of the City acknowledges the progress we've made toward our Issaquah, the city's first strategic plan. So, we'll share with you the introduction of the State of the City Address at this
Hi, my name is Mary Lou Polly, and I'm the mayor of Issaquah. Each year, we pause to reflect on what we've accomplished in the past 12 months and to share our plans for the future. This year, the timing is perfect, as we celebrate the city's 130th birthday. Happy birthday to Issaquah. Let's celebrate our accomplishments together. For 2022, we wanted to try something different and more interactive for my annual State of the City Address. Explore this webpage to learn more about what we've accomplished and how it relates to our strategic plan, our Issaquah.
And that webpage...
Hi, my name is Mary Lou Polly, and I'm the mayor of Issaquah.
No worries, no worries. The webpage she was referring to is issaquahwa.gov stateofthecity, all one word, no spaces, no dashes. And if you go to that, it's actually a really neat website that shows different areas of that State of the City and how it affects different needs within the community. The next item on here, board recruitment. The city is still recruiting for application, or for applicants to several volunteer boards and commissions. Boards and commissions are a fun, interesting, and impactful way to make a difference in our community. The parks, sister cities, civil service, arts, and economic vitality boards and commissions are currently accepting applications through May 31st. To learn more and to apply, go to issaquahwa.gov/apply. And then, just a few upcoming community events. The farmer's market is back for another season. The market runs 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Saturdays, rain or shine, through September 25th at Pickering Barn. A local blood drive. Give blood and save a life. Blood Works Northwest is hosting a blood drive, May 19th to 20th, at the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints in Issaquah. Book your appointment through bloodworksnw.org. Recycling and Waste Webinar. Where Does It Go? Join recology in the city for a webinar on May 20th at noon to learn what happens to recyclable material after it leaves our homes. Registration is free and is available on the city's website. And the Historic Pub Crawl. The Downtown Issaquah Association and the Issaquah History Museums are pleased to announce the 2022 tour dates for the Historic Pub Crawl. Book your tickets now for one of three historic pub crawls to learn about Issaquah's colorful history of murder, mayhem, and prohibition. Find out more and book your tickets on the Downtown Issaquah Association website. Glad we can have humor and fun when talking about history. The next item of business is the Consent Calendar. The consent calendar was distributed to council in advance. If authorized, the items on the consent calendar will be considered together and approved by one motion. Have the payables and payroll been reviewed?
They have.
They have.
Thank you. Does any council member desire to remove any items from the consent calendar and consider it under regular business? Okay, seeing none. Is there a motion?
I move to approve the consent calendar as presented in tonight's agenda packet.
Second.
Thank you. The motion to approve the consent calendar as presented has been moved and seconded. Is there any council discussion? Okay. Given that we have a council member attending virtually tonight, we'll take a roll call vote. So, Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, starting with Councilmember De Michelle.
Aye.
Deputy Counsel President Hall.
Aye.
Councilmember Hunt.
Aye.
Councilmember Joe.
Aye.
Councilmember Ray.
Aye.
Council President Walsh.
Aye.
That's six ayes. Zero nays.
Great. Okay, that passes unanimously, 6-0. And the next item of business, we actually don't have any regular business, so we move to good of the order. Does anyone have any items for good of the order? Okay, seeing none. Just a quick announcement of upcoming council meetings. June 6, council meeting. Anticipated agenda items include the 2023 to 2028 Six-Year Transportation Improvement Program and the Solid Waste Contract. The next item of business is an executive session. As earlier announced, there will be an executive session held this evening to discuss pending or potential litigation per RCW 42.30.110, Pren 1, Pren I. The item is expected to take approximately 10 minutes. Action is anticipated to follow in open session. As a reminder, executive sessions are closed to the public, both in person and virtually. We will now recess into executive session at 7:43 p.m. For those participating virtually, anyone who is not part of the closed session will remain in the main meeting. You're welcome to stay in the meeting until it is reconvened. Okay. And so, we're looking for the on-air light to...